Hello. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Board of Education to order April 10th, 2019. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
He's going to get up and say something. They're going to say something. Yeah, Chris is right. Yep.
Good evening, everyone. We want to take this opportunity to welcome you to Smith-Clove Elementary School, our visitors, our Board of Education, our Central Administration. Before we introduce the main attraction tonight, which is our first graders and some of our kindergartners, I do want to thank our custodial staff for the job that they did putting this together today. It is a big undertaking and they did a phenomenal job working together, so thank you to our great custodial staff here. And with that, I'm privileged to introduce some of our Smith-Clovers here, representing from four classes tonight. We have from kindergarten classes, we have Ms. Hefner's class and Mrs. Machete's class. And first graders, we have from our first grade classes, Mrs. Adler and Mrs. Whittle. And they are going to be singing a song to you tonight under the direction of our phenomenal music teacher, Mrs. Sinnet. And I do want to say that here in kindergarten and first grade, we put a lot of emphasis on listening skills and following directions, so this song is going to kind of reinforce that, and we're going to see how everybody else here, adults and some of our older kids that we have in the audience, how well they can listen and follow directions along with this song as well. So we hope you enjoy "I Am a Pizza" by our Smith-Clovers.
I am a pizza, I am a pizza, best of cheese, best of cheese. Rotten tomatoes, rotten tomatoes, sausage squeeze, sausage squeeze. Onion and mushroom, onion and mushroom, order my own, order my own. I am a pizza, ready to go. Soy una pizza, soy una pizza. Muchos quesos, muchos quesos, llena de salsa, llena de salsa. De tomar, de tomar, se moja si ongo, se moja si ongo. Order my own, order my own. Soy una pizza, soy la mejor. I am a pizza, I am a pizza. Pepperoni, pepperoni. Javi, javi. Pomelo, pomelo. I am a pizza, I am a pizza. Order my own, order my own. I am a pizza, please take me home. I am a pizza, I am a pizza. Peppered on top, peppered on top. Out of the oven, out of the oven. Into the box, into the box. Into the car, and into the car. Upside down, upside down. I am a pizza, dropped on the ground. I was a pizza, I was a pizza. I was the best, I was the best. I was a pizza, now I'm the best.
We're going to let them go across. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, my God, that's so cute.
And now the parents leave. So just give it a couple of seconds. Huh? Yeah. Yeah, they're all leaving. It's okay.
The song's going to be stuck in my head.
And now there's seats. Now we have seats.
Can I just see what's speaking?
Yeah.
It's pretty crowded.
Tell me how long I should wait.
Uh, they're going to move around, so we should wait.
That's it, I can't.
How are they going to speak together?
Just to get stand up there.
Come sit.
They got three minutes, bitch.
a little late. I love to be on time, but the board was with our attorneys on an in-service training session, and we ran a little long, so my apologies to you. The mission statement of the school district says, "We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and prepare our students to become responsible, global citizens, and good singers." No, that's not in the mission statement, but it seems, it might as well be, I mean, with these, with these children and with our exceptional music program all the way through. Maybe we should add that to the... Do I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, we are now going to have the annual PTA Reflections presentation by Shannon Chambers, PTA president, and that will be followed by a brief recess, so anyone who is here can do exactly as those folks just did.
Good evening. I'm Shannon Chambers. I'm the Monroe-Woodbury PTA Council President. For 50 years, National PTA's Reflections Program has helped students explore their own thoughts, feelings, and ideas, develop artistic literacy, increase confidence, and find a love for learning that will help them become more successful in school and in life. Each year, our Monroe-Woodbury PTA invites students in kindergarten through 12th grade to create original works of art in response to a student-selected theme. The theme for this past or this school year was Heroes Around Me. Students submit their completed works of art in one or all of the available art categories: dance choreography, film production, literature, music composition, photography, and visual arts. Student winners from the local level have the opportunity to move up through their district, region, council, and state PTA programs to the national level. We'd like to recognize the top three PTA Reflections entries for each school in each of the six categories. And when we call your name, or when I call your name, if you come up on the other side of the speaker, and we will have a photograph. At the high school for dance choreography, Jaylen Stiano. Visual arts, Tessa Little. At the middle school in dance choreography, Savannah DeZio, and she advanced to state and won New York State Merit of Honor. For music, Purab Chakra. Gabriel Ramos, and he advanced to state and won the New York State Merit of Honor. And in literature at the middle school, Evra Shandalk, who's already up here. Harrison Reynolds. And Rohan Sanakya, who's also coming up next. Visual arts, Carson Pesch. Rohan Sanakya. And Jamie Caleb. That's it, front of the school. Yes.
You mean at the end, also?
Mm-hmm. When they're done with the yes, I think we're going to be sending them pins.
Is this the end?
No. Can we still have?
And in visual arts for 3rd through 5th grade, Holly Romeo. Mia Perna. And Jayden Crawley. For photography in 3rd through 5th grade was Mason Perna. Literature, Logan Gold. And North Main Elementary for photography, Clara Witrock. Literature, 3rd through 5th grade, Isabella Pavanano. Visual arts, 3rd through 5th grade, Ruby Everly. Pine Tree Elementary, literature, 3rd through 5th grade, Tabitha Anderson. William Reynolds. Dance choreography, 3rd through 5th grade, Anushka Chandiak. Music composition, 3rd through 5th grade, Rebecca Newman. Photography, 3rd through 5th grade, Gianna Enriquez. Cheyenne DeZio, who advanced to state. And Alexander Ramos. Visual arts, 3rd through 5th grade, Slade Carlin. Anushka Chandiak. And Alexander Ramos. Sapphire Elementary, visual arts, Giovanna Ross. Liliana Fontana. And Donovan Ross. Photography, Aviel Flores-Lasosa. Ashley Lenari. And Olivia Arroyo. Literature, Giovanna Ross. And Lucius Flores-Lasosa. Dance choreography is Kai Officer. Music composition, Olivia Arroyo. Film production, Logan J. Kaiser. And Smith-Clove Elementary, photography, Lincoln Pierce. Visual arts, Nora Hamilton. Vincent Klop. And Gabrielle Byers. And literature, Brienne McCain. We want to thank everyone for our many participants, and our next year's theme for the 2019-2020 program year is Look Within. Thank you.
I just want to say that all of these winners will be getting pins, will be sent pins in recognition of their great achievement, and why don't we all stand up and give them And thanks to the PTA for doing this year after year.
Yes.
Terrific.
Let them all take the picture.
Are we doing recess after these classes?
Yes, I'm doing it right now.
Okay, yes, we'll be doing a little bit later. Yeah, yeah.
Now you're giving them a big smile.
Never got a picture.
All right, now give them a big smile. You are awesome.
We're going to have a brief recess. For those who wish to exit, they may exit. We'll be back in five minutes. We're reconvening into public session. No board business took place during our short recess. We have questions and/or comments from interested citizens. Lorraine Loaning. Oh, I know you.
Good evening. I'm Lorraine Loaning. I'm a district resident. I actually have two things. After Mrs. Rodriguez presents the budget, that will be online, so we can go down line by line in preparation for the hearing.
After the board approves it.
Okay.
The board has to approve it first. It's just my recommendation.
Okay, cool. Thank you. The main thing I want to talk about tonight is about how schools are measured, and it seems to me, I come to these frequently, and I pay attention, and the New York State District Report Card is flashed on the screen a lot, and Dr. Hassler comes up and explains the data, and the number that seems to be presented an awful lot is graduation rate, okay? I don't want to minimize graduating from high school. It's important, it's extremely important, and anyone who knows me knows how important education is to me. My kids value it when I'm around other people. I try and explain that to them. You will never regret the knowledge that you acquire over your life, and every moment that you can learn something from, you should. But graduation rates to me shouldn't be the only metric. There are other things, and I was looking at some other districts in the state and the county, and I looked at Cornwall's website, mostly because it's a neighboring district, and the people are just like us, and it's very similar. And in addition to their New York State Report Card, they also have the sheet with how their school does on standardized tests. So I can tell you how many, what percentage of their students got between a 1,200 and 1,300 on the SAT, and how many got a 5 on the biology AP exam, and how many took the math IC, whatever that is, SAT subject test, and so on, and there's a list of special honors and mean scores, and I think that these are really important things and shouldn't be minimized or ignored, and they should be displayed, and we need to look, see how we compare, if we need to put in some work on those things. We need to put the resources there. I know that, like I said, graduation's really important, but perhaps if we focus some resources, time, and money into improving these scores, getting more kids to take AP exams, improving SAT scores, more SAT subject tests, and so on, that that would be a worthwhile endeavor. I mean, just think for yourself how you spent your last day or week as the board or as all the educators behind me. How much time and resources did you spend on kids who are disruptive, or how much time did you spend on kids who are winning reflections and making them want to order a pizza because they're singing like angels, you know? So how much time are we devoting to who in this district? And maybe we need to, you know, do a little introspection and see if that's the best way to spend money to get the best bang for the buck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elsie actually will touch upon that in her presentation tonight, some of that. Ethan Zurinsky.
I've been here before. You guys know me. For those of you unfamiliar, I'm a senior at Monroe-Woodbury High School, and I'm coming here tonight to discuss a topic that's been plaguing me for a couple of weeks now. This is the soonest board meeting I could get to to speak to you guys about it, and it's about the college application process and the way our school treats it, and some of the underlying issues there. Now, I applied to several very selective institutions, Ivy League schools, schools that are really difficult to get into, and this is not about me. There are many kids at our district who are more qualified than I am and who have way better resumes than me, who have gotten, who have applied to these schools and got the same outcome, and it hasn't been a very favorable one. These schools are not easy to get into. You could have a 1,600 SAT, which is the highest score, you could have a 4.0 GPA, and you can't guarantee admission to these places. In our, my little nerd circle, it's cool, you can call us nerds, it's cool, but we have a little running gag that unless you've cured cancer, you're not going to get into these schools. Like, there's no way to guarantee it unless that's what you've done. You're that far above. So our school has many, many high achievers, and I think that's something that's awesome, that's great, that's really cool. But very few manage to get into their dream schools or their reach schools, and I'm not really sure why. It's something I've been really mulling over for the last two weeks. Perhaps people didn't put enough time into their application essays and they were poorly written. I know mine could have been better. Maybe extracurricular activities, which is something these colleges look at, were lacking. I play varsity sport three seasons a year, officer in three clubs, and I'm at the low end there. Again, kids way more qualified than I am. And there are so many factors here that it's really hard to pinpoint it, like what caused me to get rejected, what caused other people to get these rejection letters when they've put so much effort into their high school years? It's a really difficult thing, and you have students asking themselves, what more could I have done? What more could I have given into this process? So with so few students, with so many students with varying degrees of abilities and unique selling points that you'd think at least some of them would get into these schools, and really it being difficult to pinpoint a single fault, the really only conclusion I've been able to come to is that there's something systemically wrong with the system here. Whether this is something about the district's reputation, or if it's just that these elite universities see the school as, hey, this is just another middle-class suburban area, we'll take one kid maybe, I don't really know if that's it, or if there's some other issue about the process. Really, I don't think there's any way to know definitively what it is, but I do know that these kids who are really high achievers are not getting into the colleges and universities that they want to get into and that they have worked to get into. I will say this about it, I know for a fact that administration and members of our school faculty spend a lot more time dealing with troublemakers than they do with high achievers. I know this from personal experience. As a freshman, I was very, very stupid and got suspended. I got a one-on-one with the principal of the school, vice president, dean, and you, Ms. Rodriguez. I got to talk to you one-on-one with my parents there.
Oh, yeah. I remember now.
Yeah. Yeah. And that was a big deal. Since then, I've tried to improve myself, haven't gotten in any trouble, but just some of the things I've done, I've become a National Merit Scholar since then, I qualified for the state math competition, I placed in the interscholastic Hudson Valley Chess League, and these are things that I am not alone in doing. There are some of my peers who have accomplished the same exact things, and I don't want to make this about me, and there are kids who have gone further than I have in these things and done better than I have, and kudos to them. That's impressive, and that should be celebrated. I really don't know why the emphasis is spent on the troublemakers and the people who are trying to pull through the system. I understand that statistics like graduation rate are important, but I do think that some focus needs to be put onto these higher-achieving students who really have real aspirations. And a high school diploma, like Lorraine Loaning, my mom over there, she said, she said it's nothing to, like, look down upon, it's still a feat, but I do think that for people who are trying to go further, you need to put the more effort in, and they are doing that, the students are doing that, and it doesn't seem like the district is. The district knows exactly who the high achievers are by the time they're in middle school. They are starting to place kids into honors classes, AP classes. This data is all tracked, like, they know exactly who you are. Like, they know exactly who you are, how you do in your courses. You have a number that IDs who you are. Everyone, every student knows theirs. And all of the people who wanted to apply to an Ivy League school or any of these selective institutions, they knew it early on, too. And maybe, maybe they found out about themselves that they were going to do it later on, like sophomore, junior year of high school, but a lot of kids knew eighth, ninth grade that I'm going to apply to one of these schools. I'm going to try to reach out and do that, improve myself, and work for it. These are the kids who I think our guidance department in particular has really dropped the ball with. These are kids who, because of the competitive nature of the schools they're applying to, really need that extra touch. I know that, for me personally, my guidance department secretary, Paula Donovan, she's a Saints lover, I saw more of her during this process than I did of my guidance counselor. And I know that you have to schedule appointments with your guidance counselor, but if you're having, like, an emotional breakdown, they will fit you in there no matter what. If you need help with college, they'll say, schedule an appointment, come back in three weeks. By the way, you have to miss your AP science class to get in. That's not okay. Like, these are classes that are really intensive, and missing a day will hurt you. And when the guidance department will make you miss a class to see them about your college applications, which is also very important, it puts a lot of pressure on these kids. My final point is about the support mechanisms in the guidance department. Emotional and mental wellness support is something that has been emphasized by our district a lot in recent years. The foundation of MW Cares Day, the presentation a few board meetings back from our school psychologists. It's something that's had a lot of emphasis placed on it. Ivy League universities have this tradition where, on the last Thursday in March, they release their admission decisions for regular decision applicants. And there are several other reach schools that do this, Duke, Northwestern, lots of very selective schools. And through Naviance, the district knows exactly who applied to those schools. Every kid enters their, what schools they're applying in to in there, so the school knows. And these are kids who have worked for four years, really hard, put a lot of effort in. And a lot of them will be getting no's, the door slammed in their face that night. And that's just the reality. The numbers don't work out. These are very selective schools. I understand that. I think most of people do understand that. But the day after this, a lot of people, I'm going to be frank here, a lot of people were bummed out, like, I'm in classes, AP classes with a lot of these kids, and there were a lot of people who were really kind of sad about getting the door slammed in their faces after working hard. Again, not that there's anything wrong with attending a state school, but to put it in one of my friends' terms, I did not work hard for all of high school to go to a SUNY school. And again, for me personally, if I knew that my path was going to take me to a SUNY, which it's not, but I know for some people it is, I would have taken high school a lot easier. I would have had more fun. I'm going to be straight up with you. I would have probably gone to a lot more, like, Friday night parties, because...
And gotten into trouble again.
Maybe, but I...
No? Okay.
But I know for a fact that some of my friends even used the word depressed on that Friday, and even after that. This is a really heartbreaking time for some of these kids who've put their effort in. And even though the guidance department may not put the effort in to get these kids into these schools, and I don't know that the effort's not there, I'm not in there, I really couldn't tell you what goes on in there, but I do know that a lot of kids who are very well-qualified don't get in, and at the very least, our school needs to help their emotional well-being after this time. Because again, every single kid who applied to those schools knew that that's when decisions were coming out. I like to think our guidance department would know that. And a check-in on these kids, like, how hard would that be, like, during their lunch, say, hey, come down to the main office, we're going to say, how you doing? Because there were some kids who were really bummed out, and that's, that's a tough pill to swallow.
Okay, right. Thanks. Elsie will respond the next time, as is our practice. But I'm, I'm... Thank you. I mean, well thought out, well articulated, and that's appreciated. And I just, I just want to put, it has nothing, it doesn't have anything to do with your administration questions. I just want to make one comment about the myth of the elite university. There's huge competition. People, as you say, could work hard and not get in. I don't think that that's a reason perhaps not to work hard if you know you're not going to get in. But the college, the people who succeed in life all don't come from Harvard, you know that, or Yale, or whatever you're talking about. It's going to be what you, it sounds trite, but it's true. You're, wherever you go, you're going to make of that four-year, whatever, experience what you will, and you'll come out of it really well-educated and successful because of you, and not because necessarily of the place that you go. And you'll have a great time, too. All right? I just wanted to put my two cents in on that, because everybody thinks that life is going to succeed or fail for me if I, you know, if I get in or not get into an elite joint. Barbara Backus?
First, I'd like to touch on what Ethan was talking about. I commend you for coming up and talking about what you did. My son was one of the boys who's in the top 25, who was rejected from one of those schools and waitlist to another. And I think his point is, those kids are devastated the day after, and maybe the emotional support of knowing, because Ivy League Day is May 23rd or May 28th that day. And you can go around to, he's in all the AP classes with my son, five AP classes, and those are the same kids applying to the same colleges. And are the colleges competitive? Yes. And did these kids work hard? 100%. But it's upsetting to get the no. And I think that's what he was trying to say.
Yep.
What I wanted to talk about tonight was graduation, and the fact that we were notified that graduation was going to be held inside this year. So it was upsetting and disappointed to be notified that graduation will be held in the gymnasium this year. Not only are the parents upset, but the students are extremely upset as well. We feel, we all feel that we are being short-changed. Last year, you asked for our support in voting for the athletic fields, and we came out and we supported you. But this year, never in a million years did we think that our yes votes would be turned against us and would impede us from having the graduation that these kids deserved. These kids have worked hard and have looked forward to this graduation for several years, many students starting in this district in kindergarten. Every student deserves to have every person present at graduation who has supported them along their journey. We understand that in past years, sometimes it's inclement weather and you can't control the weather, but we can control this. Decisions can be made, and a well-thought-out plan can be made to have the graduation outside. Parents weren't consulted, and parents weren't given the choice. Parents were told, you have to pick. How does one family pick if you have several members in your immediate family? My family alone, my sister lives in this district, and my brother lives in this district, and they have supported my children along the way. So how do I decide who gets to come and who gets to stay? And Grandma, Grandpa, you can't come. There's an oven for you. You have to watch it via television. Even if the reason was the dust, why doesn't, why don't we wait on construction of the fields in that particular area? Or why don't we spray the fields to wet them down so the dust doesn't come up? But I think, and I've spoken to a lot of different families, and I feel a lot of families agree with me, if you were given the choice to get a little dusty and have graduation outside, you'd pick the dust. And again, I would just like to say, it's, it's not fair to have someone choose. I have twins that are graduates, graduating, and how do you get, pick one and a half persons per person? I think it needs to be addressed.
Thank you. Alyssa Lipkin?
Good evening, Board.
Good evening, members of Monroe Woodbury. My name is Alyssa Lipkin. I am also here to speak on graduation this evening. My daughter Lindsay is one of the graduating members and has been an active member of this Monroe Woodbury community since kindergarten. And I wholeheartedly agree with Mrs. Backus on her perspective of the situation at hand. Knowing, and I don't, if I could just have an acknowledgement of who was on the subcommittee for planning this particular project, just so I know who I'm addressing here on the Board? None of you were on the subcommittee for this? Okay. Just one person? There wasn't a committee?
It was not, it was not a board committee. It's an administrative matter.
Okay. Okay.
Are you talking about the fields or are you talking about the decision about graduation?
I'm talking about both, and the fact that there wasn't a contingency plan, at least that, you know, the public was made aware of, in terms of if the fields, the actual construction was going to begin before school ended, what was the contingency plan going to be for the graduating class and the actual ceremony itself? And it, that's just a slight on the part of the students and the members of the community along with the families who very much would like to be able to participate along with the students in this. It's a huge deal. There've been a lot of psychosocial studies that have done research on the correlation between experiences and memories. So all of us here in this room can take a moment and go back in time to your own high school graduation, and, you know, I'm hoping for most of you, it was an enjoyable and memorable experience, and that lives on with you for the rest of your life. And it can definitely live on with the students who are graduating and in the community itself. You know, these students will graduate, and I'm sure many of them will want to return to the community. But if it's, if it's, you know, done in a disjointed manner, it's definitely going to leave, you know, a negative imprint on their memory of the experience itself. So I'm, I'm here to hopefully ask that you are able to rethink if it's not going to be on the field. There, you know, I certainly would like to know why it could not be in the parking lot where it has been for numerous graduation ceremonies in the past. And because you have done that so often, logistically, you could probably do it blindfolded, because you, again, you've done it so often in the past. And that way, more members of the community can come out to support this graduating class. Just something to think about, because we really would appreciate that.
Thank you. Samantha Mitchell? Is that Samantha Mitchell? Oh, she had to leave?
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Do you want to take a break, in case people want to leave, or we keep going?
Do we have an update on questions or comments from citizens in the past?
We didn't, we haven't had any questions or comments, but I certainly will have my word cut out for me for the next meeting.
All right. Thank you. We're going to be going on with other business. If people want to stay, you can stay. If you want to take this as an opportunity to cut and run, please do so. And we'll just, let's just take a couple of minutes or not? No.
Let's just keep going.
If, okay. We're going to keep going.
One more question. In terms of notifying the parents of what the, if there are going to be any changes to the decision, can you give us at least an idea of how we will be notified and when that will occur?
I think that if there's any notification, it would come through the high school. Anything would come through the high school.
Okay. And again, can, we have an idea of the timeframe on that?
I really couldn't answer that right now. I'm sorry, I can't answer that.
Okay.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 27th, 2019 Regular Board of Education meeting? It's been moved. Do we have a second?
Can I, Samantha Mitchell had to leave.
No.
I'm sorry. Do we have a, a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
It, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. We have a motion to approve the first reading of the policy manual update. Chris, you want to? It's about equivalence in instructional staff and materials.
It's pretty self-explanatory, assuming we're waiting to get back from the legal to not that.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry. The reports by the Board of Education Committee's policy.
We're working on a big packet right now, a lot of wellness. Dr. Hassler is going to get back to us this week. We have a meeting on Friday, this Friday, right? This Friday, to wellness throughout the district, encompasses of the whole, from the nurse to cafeteria to everything. So that's really all we have working on.
Okay. Orange County School Boards?
Sure. So last week, Elsie, me, and you went to the dinner that was to present the BOSI's budget, and it was a great dinner, and they presented their, their budget, and the culinary students served us, and we met with some of the students in the other programs. There was no official meeting.
Don, facilities?
A bunch of, bunch of information. I'll let Patrick, it's pretty extensive.
Yeah, so I'll just sort of give us an update on the procurement process, which is sort of where we are in the capital project. And the project we're talking about is replacement of the HVAC system at the high school, installation of two turf fields, and new track, replacement of the existing track. So we had our bid opening on March 26th, and the, the organization of the bid, it was organized into five separate contracts. And the first two pieces, it was, it was one A and B had to do with the turf field and the lighting associated with the fields and the track. And contract number two was the roof replacement. There's a section of the high school roof that will need to be replaced due to the installation of a new cooling tower. And finally, the last two contracts are three A and B. They dealt with the mechanical aspect of the, the project, which is the bulk of it, and finally, the electrical hookup for the new chillers and cooling tower. So tonight, we'll be asking the Board, we have the award recommendation letters from our architect, Lynn, to award the roof replacement and mechanical aspect of the job to Pearl River Plumbing and Heating, which goes by Bertuzzi, and that contract is $998,968. We're asking the Board to reject the roofing replacement bid. It was $84,000. The budget for that was about $60,000, and Bertuzzi is willing to do that as an ad alternate for $30,000. So it's a, it's a smart move, and it helps us stay under budget. It also has the benefit of allowing Bertuzzi to get moving on that, so they're not dependent on the roofer to finish their work or start their work before they can do the, the major mechanical work. work. So, that's one of the major reasons I think they wanted to do it is just so they're not held up in this process. And the other piece is the 3B electrical contract to Rockland Electric, which is just the hookup of the new chillers and cooling tower at the high school. So, we're basically dealing with the HVAC system tonight at the high school. At the next meeting on April 25th, we'll have a recommendation for the site work, the new track and the artificial turf installation. We're still sort of looking at and reviewing some of our options there. Let's see. That's pretty much it. I know that, Lorraine, you had a couple of specific questions?
I do. I don't know what I missed and I don't know if you've even answered. So, what is the timeline for the HVAC? When do we expect this to be done, start to finish?
Well, why don't I kind of do the whole timeline? So, the full project, we're going to begin the field portion, I would say mid-May. Shovel in the ground mid-May. We'll award, if we award in two weeks at our next Board meeting, we may, when we work this out, offer them a notice to proceed, which is essentially a letter saying, "We will award you this in a couple of weeks." So, if you need to mobilize or do anything, you can move ahead with that. But that is the most lengthy time, you know, piece of the project is the field work, the lighting, it's new lighting, it's electrical work, the turf installation, you know, obviously is part of that. So, we need to start that as quickly as possible. You know, one of the issues with this through the bid opening was a contractor that said, "I can do the work, but I can't meet your timeline." And so, that is a critical piece of the bid specification.
So, that's my question. That goes into my second part of that question. If we chose this contractor who says they can fulfill that obligation and that timeline, if, for whatever reason, because we all know there's things that are beyond our control and beyond theirs, but we're really not caring about what they're, you know, we have a specific timeframe, are we holding them to penalties? Is there a stipulation that if you don't do this by this time, then there are going to be penalties incurred?
Yes, there are. There are penalties in the contract. They're called liquidated damages. It's $1,000 a day for every day they're late. I think September 1st was the deadline to be substantially complete. You know, this project, particularly the field portion, the site work, the excavation, is somewhat weather-dependent. So, it's not to say that if we have a very wet spring and summer, that won't impact it. It will. It will. But I would just say this, that the firm that we're leaning towards is a large firm. I think they do this kind of work, big projects, so I think they're in a really good position to meet the timeline with two crews. They can work on both fields simultaneously and they've assured us, we've had conversations with them about our timeline, our needs, some of the complexities of it, et cetera, and they've reassured us they'll, they can meet it.
So, around this time, a lot of manufacturers and a lot of companies increase their pricing pretty much between 3.5 and about 5%. Is there already, you know, money allocated for that or do they stand to a specific, the price is the price regardless of whatever increases they may, you know, get from someplace?
It's a bid.
It's a bid? They got to figure it out?
Right. It's a bid. That is the price. So, they submitted a bid for, you know, scope work and that's what the contract would be. That's what they have to live with. It doesn't matter if the price of gasoline goes up and the price of synthetic turf increases.
And if there's change orders on unforeseen issue, for whatever reason?
Yes.
The bid is the bid, but if there's a change order to that, is that for us or it's not our problem?
Well, a change order, there can be change orders with financial impacts. There can be change orders, you know, there can be deduct change orders.
Well, deductions we're okay with. When it's less.
But, I mean, the bottom line is if there's something that is there, an unforeseen condition, then there are change orders sometimes in capital projects. What we did to try to avoid that is we did some, like, for instance, this is a project where they're digging up the field. They're excavating the field, they're installing drainage. We did geotechnical testing, borings of something we paid for to ensure.
Okay.
And we put that as part of our spec book, which is an 800-page document, which has the contracts, all the plans and specifications embedded in that. So, that testing is our investment to ensure.
Like almost a guarantee.
There are no change orders as far as that because we've bored into the soil, we know the contents of the soil, we know what it looks like. And so do you. So, you should bid accordingly.
Okay. Great. I think that is all that I actually had. Oh, are these local contractors?
Define local.
Are they from Orange County? Are they from New York City? Are they union? Are they, you know, all that kind of?
They are not from Orange County. One is from New Jersey, the other is from Westchester County. So, and, you know, they will have to pay prevailing wages because this is a public works project. So, they're, you know, well aware of those rules.
Okay.
Suzanne?
Yes. You said there were penalties incurred, which would be incurred if they don't meet certain deadlines. Do they still get penalized if they're delayed because of weather, hurricanes, blizzards? Or?
Not entirely.
Acts of God.
Not entirely.
Right. Because there are certain things that, and we-
That they would be exempt from?
Right. We track that, you know, we're going to be aware of that. They build a certain number of days into-
Like snow days, like we have.
Yeah, exactly. They know. I mean, it's not as though it's not going to rain at all, right, in a four-month span. It will, of course. And, you know, that would be a normal, you know, normal season, if you will, that there's an expectation that it's normal.
But if it's above and beyond normal, like the years that we've had hurricanes?
Right.
Acts of God.
Right. That would be the kind of thing that-
That would be the kind of thing that they would not be penalized.
We may have to give them, you know-
One of the big challenges is, and this is an ongoing issue that we have right now, is our field is in a swamp.
Right.
So, we already experience issues every single year because of where, you know, the conditions of our field. And we've had three years' worth of Board meetings about the conditions of our field. So, I personally, based on, you know, looking at where our real estate is, I expect for there to be rain delays because we're not building on a rock. We're building in a swamp. When we're all done, it will alleviate the field issues and it'll alleviate the rain issues that we've had in the past. We'll be able to play on these fields immediately after it rains. So, I think, you know, the likelihood that, based on the real estate that we have, the exact same reasons that we've had issues for years with our fields is probably going to impact this field. And one of the things that we wouldn't know until the contractors came back with their bids is how much time they needed to complete it on time. So, we tried, you know, when you look at a school year, when they start, when they stop, we have a limited window. We can't change the start and stop of the school year. So, as Patrick said, we had one contractor that was considerably cheaper, but his timeframe, he just couldn't do it. He would have had to start today and he probably wouldn't finish till December, but he could have done it cheaper. So, a lot of things went into figuring out exactly what we were going to do, but there have been contingencies built in for delays with the athletic fields and working with other schools. So, you know, we've done quite a bit to plan for contingencies.
Thank you.
John, if I could, the only other thing I want to mention is the change orders that are under the Business and Financial section of the agenda tonight. There are a series of change orders associated with our Smart Schools Bond Act capital projects. That's the cabling, the IT cabling project.
Right.
And I don't know if, Bargrav, if you would have maybe addressed that, give us a little summary of those changes?
So, as you may recall, the Board approved the Smart School Bond Act in 2015 and then we applied to the state. The state approved this over plan in 2017, November, and then we started working after the bid last year. So, in technology, from 15 to 18 is a long time. The technology changes. So, some of the change orders are a $0 change order and some are the improvement that happened in the last three, four years in infrastructure. So, we want to make sure that we invest this money into the latest of the infrastructure and buying this equipment that will last for five to seven years for us.
Great.
One of the most critical things is the cabling. We can easily upgrade, not necessarily financially, but it's easy without disrupting the school to upgrade the devices that are on the ends of the cable. It is a huge disruption to have to run new cables, stow in walls, stow in the ceilings. So, I think the change order that we're talking about is primarily focused on upgrading some older cable to some newer cable in rooms. It already had, it had networking cable, but it wasn't up to the newest spec. So, it's a very good investment of money because we'll get it done cheaper while it there.
Good. Thank you.
John, can I request a five-minute recess?
Yes.
Make a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Five-minute recess. All those in favor? Opposed? And a five-minute recess. Board meeting, April 10th. No Board business took place in that spontaneous recess. Thank you. We have a discussion now about the role of world languages in post-secondary planning. Karen Jordan and Wayne Williams take the floor.
So, just before they begin, I just want to share with the community and the people that are sitting here is that one of our Board members had several questions and I felt that it was more appropriate to have Ms. Jordan, Mr. Cassidy, and Mr. Williams address some of the questions that she had. So, they're briefly going to go over the role of world languages in post-secondary planning, but I felt it was more appropriate to have them seated at the table so that if anybody on the Board has any questions, this is your opportunity.
Would you like me to just go through the questions that were presented to us or?
No. Could you talk a little bit, you know, about the role of world languages in general? So, we know that our students select world languages in middle school.
Sure. So, we just wanted to see if you were presenting the Board of Education, allowing us these questions. If you can answer these questions, and if there are questions to present, we can communicate with us. Present all of the information. In sixth grade, all of our sixth-grade students are presenting a video of potential language options. And this is for all of our students. All of our students with disabilities in our regular education children will have this opportunity. All the students who do not take a language at the grade level are children with language exempt. But I practice that we are really working hard to look at our children at the middle school years and not language exempt them because we want to allow our students to learn at the post-secondary options at the high school level. Students are placed language-based on their selection and scheduled to take the intro to the languages seventh grade, followed by Level 1 in eighth grade. Level 1 is a credit bearing course. The mentees who come into the school to us in the beginning of the year are in grade eight with no language experience, they are typically placed in the eighth grade course. If they come in the mid-year, they are often placed into an intro course at the grade seven level or they are directly Level 1 at that level. There are occasions when students have failed the seventh grade course or have failed the eighth grade course and then they are not language exempt and they do not become language exempt, they do not complete grade program, they seek Level 1 when they get a surprise. At that high school level?
At the high school level, basically, I think I want to reframe things just a little bit. We are, I'll take ownership of the guidance department in this process. And the guidance department, I view us as being in partnership with the student and with the parent. So, in the process of this partnership, we attend CSE or Annual Review Meetings. At these Annual Review Meetings, it is discussed whether or not the student should or should not go on to foreign language. And beyond that, beyond the CSE meetings that happen or the Annual Review Meetings that happen every year, we also, we also meet with our students with regard to scheduling. Every year, there's a classroom presentation where we provide information regarding graduation, information regarding diploma types, requirements for graduation, et cetera. And during that conversation, we're also providing all students with a handout with which, or which they will use to make their requests for the successive year, the next year coming. You can use that handout to stipulate certain elective courses you would like to take, but you can also use that form to say, "I would like to take Spanish one," or "I would like to take French one," or something along those lines. So, again, going back to the partnership, we provide that information to students and parents and then hopefully, you know, at some point, that discussion takes place at home. We get the recommendation or the request that we would like to, the student would like to take the foreign language and then we'll go ahead and we'll comply and we'll register them for the following year.
But upon transition from eighth going into ninth, if a child has taken, whether they're regular education or someone with a disability, if they've taken the Language 1 requirements, we encourage all of our children to continue with the sequence of languages as they enter into the high school level. And through course selection and planning, that's a conversation not only with the student but also with the parents. So, that partnership becomes critical in terms of what is the end goal? What is the goal? What is the child thinking in terms of language requirements? Do they want to continue with the second year of language, third year of language, going on to higher language requirements? Or is it their wish to stop at language at year one? We always, always encourage our children to move on to further language requirements. We think of colleges in three different layers. A third of our colleges really look for the sequence of language more than two years. A third of our colleges look for two years and there are many, many, many colleges that are language exempt. So, we have those conversations with our parents and we give them full lists, what early on of colleges that may not require languages, colleges that require two years and colleges that may require more than two years.
And it should also be mentioned that there are schools that, I checked with a few of my friends in college admissions, I spoke with someone at NYU this week, at Binghamton, at Monmouth, another, the College of St. Rose, and even the schools that, most of the schools that have a language requirement for their graduation, most of the colleges and universities that have a language requirement for their graduation, will waive the language requirement for admission for students if that is stated on their IEP. And what they do on the college level is they may, they'll waive the requirement for admission, but for their graduation, rather than you taking a world language, they'll have you take American Sign Language or something along those lines that allows you to still demonstrate the proficiency in another way. And back to the partnership, every year, the conversation takes place in terms of scheduling. Every year, that conversation takes place. Further out in the year, usually right around May, we usually send out a course verification as well. So, we're going through the process of scheduling with students. They're making their requests and teachers are making their recommendations, et cetera. Around May, we usually send out a course verification that basically serves the purpose of saying, "These are the courses that you've been recommended to take next year. These are the electives that you've chosen to take next year. Let us know if there's any question. Let us know if there's a problem with this. Let us know if you'd like to make any changes." And that's another opportunity to have a family discussion and then bring that family discussion to the school as well with the guidance council and say, "We've discussed it and we think that we would like to start a foreign language," or "We would prefer to switch from this elective to that elective," et cetera. So, it is very much a partnership. I hope I answered the question.
Could you talk a little bit about the number of students that have been traditionally language exempt? And, you know, as a district, I know that we're working to move away from that. Not that we're saying that no one can be exempt, but in fact, that we are looking at the numbers and saying that it should be a more structured decision to be language exempt. Because the truth is, on the, as a senior, not having a language, it can impact what colleges you can attend.
It can.
It can.
It absolutely can and that's going to make the discussion. I did a three-year trend for the district in order to really take a look at what our language exemption numbers were in 2015 all the way through present day. And in 2015, 2016, we had 245 children that were language exempt, that were students with disabilities, grade six through 12. Thirty of those children were ungraded and they're in the numbers of 245, but as a total, we had 245 students. What was 34, I'm sorry? Thirty were ungraded on an alternate pathway.
Alternate pathway, okay.
Correct. But that's included in the 245. In 2016, 2017, we had 238 children that were language exempt. Twenty-nine were ungraded. So, that's in the numbers of 238.
Were those students, did you also gather any data? Did they take ACTs, SATs? Did they apply for a college and did they get accepted to that college based on the fact that they did not have- And did they get accepted to that college based on the fact that they did not have a foreign language, but that was the college of their dream?
So I do not have that data here for us today. This was my first year into the district, but I can certainly look back in time in terms of our indicators as to where our children went post-secondary and what their preferences were. So I can gather that data.
Because hypothetically, let's just say, you know, I am language-exempt, but I want to go to a specific college. I've stated that, and in order for me to get into that college, it needs a language. What does that look like for that student? Do you let them know, no, don't even bother? Or is there an appeal? What does that look like?
So there is appeals process at many of the universities that has to be prompted by the parent, and then we support the parent in that process. We had a student that was in regular education who wanted to get into the University of Delaware, and he had taken year one in eighth grade and year two in the high school. University of Delaware requested that both years were taken at the high school. So there was an appeal process in order to get that child into the University of Delaware. Like Mr. Williams had stated, many of these colleges, colleges for language exemption, they date, they do take into account the child's transcript, and the language is not the end-all of them getting into some schools. There are some schools that will require a language, and that is a discussion with the family. Every year, we talk about how the child is doing, whether or not language exemption is appropriate. There are some children, because of their language needs, because of their reading levels, because of their disability, they are language-exempt. But I want to share that our numbers of language exemption continue to go down, and we have more and more children taking languages, whether it's year one, year two, or more into an advanced pathway. So like I had stated in 2016, 2017, we had 238, and 29 were ungraded. In 2017, 2018, we had a total of 176, and 31 of them were ungraded. And the numbers for the children that are ungraded, because of the numbers of our children who are ungraded, continue to rise based on the disabilities that are currently within our district. So those numbers are very important, because in 2018 and 2019, we had 176 children language-exempt, but 36 were ungraded. So 140 were language-exempt in our present time, whereas when we started in 2015, 2016, we had 215 children that were on a diploma pathway that were exempt. So we continue to increase our rigor and allow children greater opportunities for language.
So you mentioned about the appeal process. So it has to start on the parent level, and then, so regardless, what if they have an IEP?
Regardless.
It's regardless. The parent has to be the one to start that, and then the school?
We support. If there's something, if there is something that a university or a college requires for us to do, we will help the parent do that. But it really is with the parent.
Okay. So this is off-topic. I want to actually refer to, you mentioned about a parent. Can that go for any school then, without a language? Like this young man that got up and spoke about him not getting into and making the school. If they made appeals, does the school back that up?
Every school is different. I can't unilaterally state that, that that particular school that this young man was speaking about would be relevant within the appeal process. But again, I think every school is different, every requirement is different. For students with...
And there are some schools that just will not allow for an appeal.
They won't, okay. I'm just throwing that out there, because you mentioned about the school will back it up.
Right, and they make the determination, and they make it clear that once the decision is made, that decision is final. But there are some schools that do allow for an appeal, and in those cases, they usually advise the student or the parent to submit additional information. Have you received any additional honors since you applied? What have your grades been in quarter three? Because we received quarter, quarter one and two already. They may ask, they may ask for any number of things, you know, to reconsider that student. But generally, generally, I don't see the decision being changed very often, to be honest.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for being prepared. But I definitely would like to know the statistics on what schools...
I can definitely take a look at that.
Did those students go without an SAT, without the ACT, and without the language?
So I just want to expand a little bit on the ACT and SAT, because one of the questions that was presented to us, are students with disabilities encouraged to take the ACT and SAT? So I pulled the most recent college board data for the school district as of today. And currently, we have 138 504s and 209 qualified students up at the high school, which equals 504 students. Now, is my math off?
Yes.
My math is off?
I thought so.
No, that's 430 students. We have 300 children that are already approved for college board, which is an outstanding number, because our current ninth graders, we have 72 children with IEPs and 40 children with 504s, which means those children are in the process. So when we take a look, we have about 60 children that the parents have opted not to engage in the college board process, where they have opted not to have their children take SATs and ACTs. So we are, we are about 85 to 90 percent with completion of college board process up at the high school, which is a phenomenal number.
And at every CSE or annual review, at every 504 meeting, the counselors also provide some information, handouts, having to do with graduation requirements, the various diploma options that exist within New York State, as well as a registration form or an application for accommodations through the college board.
And in addition to the school counselors, are children who qualify for our skills or resource room classes also work on the college board process in each of those rooms?
I was just looking and trying to find this article. It was in the New York State Boards Association. We get sent a magazine, a little flyer, and they're talking about, you know, districts that have failed the population of special ed, and, you know, that they're really not preparing for certain things. So, you know, it would be really nice if they would exempt, all schools exempt those, the languages, because, you know, you have the sign language, like you said. That should really maybe be pushed for any student that doesn't want to take a language. Because what if I don't want to take Spanish? Or what if I want to take Chinese? Or I want to take Russian? Are we offering those types of offerings? So it's really not fair to tell somebody they don't take Italian or Spanish, or what we have, or Braille. That's also another, that's a language. So it's a bigger discussion, I think. It is a bigger discussion. But thank you for answering.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I have a couple. In addition to Spanish, French, and Italian, are there any other offerings at the high school for language, different languages?
Not at the time.
Okay. Has there been any consideration for students who are sort of becoming proficient in the first language that they've been taking at, through middle school, high school, to maybe offer them something that would be considered, you know, as like a bonus on their high school transcript? Mandarin, Arabic, something along those lines?
Not those courses specifically, but a student could take a Spanish one if they were a French student, or an Italian one.
But they're still relegated to those three languages.
It's not necessarily, I wouldn't use the word relegated, only because if I'm continuing on with the language that I began in, I get eventually to Level Five as a senior, and I get to take the AP exam. If I stop at some point and begin with a new exam, with a new language, I never get to the Level Five, and I never have the opportunity to take the AP exam, which could result in college credit.
Several years ago, we had the Mandarin-Chinese as a long-distance learning, but then the Mandarin-Chinese person, the teacher through BOSI's, moved on, so the program disappeared.
Okay. Speaking of college credit, is there any reference to the CLEP exam for students to take, to receive the credit at a minimal cost on the college level before they even leave the high school?
No, honestly, there's, there's no discussion of a CLEP exam. And CLEP, in my experience, in all honesty, I have to stick to what I know, CLEP has to be, CLEP is more of an adult experience, where students, where a college student can, with real-life experience, maybe raising a family, having jobs, whatever the case might be, they can CLEP certain things and earn college credit through those experiences. I haven't experienced personally CLEP-ing at the high school level.
Actually, many universities and colleges are now allowing children coming in to take CLEP as they enter in as a freshman, and they need to pre-refer it. So that is at the college/university level.
Okay, because I know from personal experience, when I went to, go to grad school where I applied, they wanted, I think it was six credits of foreign language. I didn't take foreign language at the, at the college level, you know, stopped at high school. And this was an alternative pathway that was a much easier way to go in terms of getting these credits in a short amount of time, proving my proficiency from the high school level to equivalency of college.
And it's an online process as well for CLEP.
When I took it, it was, you sit there, and a guy played the tape, and you, you know, you listen to it.
So now, now it's online.
I'm a little bit outdated on that.
You had a record, right, on wax?
It was a stone tablet in my era.
And then last thing, as in reference to ELLs, in the same vein of getting the college credit, wouldn't that be something to look at in terms of students who are coming in who are from, let's say, Spanish-speaking countries, who would be proficient in Spanish, but yet their schedule, you know, they're still grappling, learning English, and the coursework along the way to be able to get that advantage of taking, getting college credit for a language that they've already become proficient in just by birth?
So we actually have, through New York State, you know, students who have evidence, they can provide evidence of being educated in another country up to a certain level, they, they're entitled to native language credit. So they can earn between three and five credits for native language credit. So we, and we definitely do that, especially when it's necessary. If we don't think that a student has enough room in their schedule to absorb all of the language, all of the English language acquisition experiences, then we definitely use that in their favor. But it's not always something that we want to resort to. We'd rather have them begin a foreign language with us, whether it's their native language, which we have begun the native language, native heritage speaker in the high school for Spanish speakers. But we prefer that they, you know, continue on with instruction here at the high school, rather than just using what they are granted automatically.
And I think that the Level Four Spanish or heritage speaker class specifically is now they're going to be offering for college.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you very much for bringing us up to date.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Now, we're going to have the superintendent's budget recommendation. Mrs. Rodriguez. And Patrick K.
There we go.
Wow, I see a... I see a sunset.
It's beautiful.
You see it when you map it.
Patrick, where's your photo credit on that?
Please don't tell me where's the question.
What happened? What is this? What was the question?
Do you plan on talking during this presentation?
I'm waiting for that. Can we lower down the lights a little? Just don't fall asleep.
Good job, Frank.
So I want to take a moment to thank the Board of Education for the opportunity to present my recommended budget for the 2019-2020 school year. I also want to thank our department chairs, our building administrators, directors, and assistant superintendents for their contributions to next year's recommended budget. I felt it was important to have a slide that represents our most important stakeholders, our students. We are a school district that is rich in diversity and a microcosm of the world we live in. We embrace our diversity and celebrate it. These pictures help tell a story, and so I begin with a question, who are we? I want to share a few facts. Recently, on Niche.com, we were given an overall rating of A for academics, club activities, and teachers. We were rated number 35 top athletic program in the country by Max Prep. MW is the reason elementary Special Olympics takes place in Orange County. We were the first school district in Orange County to participate in Special Olympics held at West Point. We were the first district to sign on to Section Nine Unified Basketball Team, and they are truly an amazing group of students. We were the first school district in Orange County to establish a varsity bowling team. We have 22 students who are being considered as 2020 National Merit Scholarship recipients. Without giving too much information, our school district will be very pleased when they announce this year's merit scholarship recipients. This is our eighth consecutive year being named Best Community for Music Education. We are the first district to sit side by side with leading members of the, of Orange Regional Medical Center to strengthen our partnership with them, to provide as much needed support to our families and students. Our current ninth graders have the opportunity to receive 57 AP college credits. If they choose an honors track, they can graduate with 38 college credits. We're the first district to create an MW Cares Day in Orange County. This event, this event was a collaboration of so many stakeholders working in partnership with each other to highlight the importance of compassion, acceptance, resilience, empowerment, and success. And it's not just today, it's a philosophy that has permeated the district. This day has a profound, has a profound effect, not only in our district, but in our county and countrywide. We serve five towns, seven school buildings, approximately 6,500 students in the community, and have over 37,000 people we serve. Next slide. Our next slide represents what are our guiding principles. School systems are very complex, and they're guided by state law, school law, and federal law. But aside from those requirements, there are guiding principles that are developed at the local level. First and foremost is district policy, which is developed by the Board of Education in collaboration with various stakeholders. It is the single most important responsibility of the Board of Education, and it helps define Our next guiding principle is the district mission statement. These are not just words on a paper. The words that resonate with us are academic achievement and success for all students, the word, the two words, safe environment, in partnership with families and communities to inspire and promote confidence, and to create responsible global citizens. Just one, one minor fact is that our graduating class last year volunteered close to 20,000 hours within our community. Our next guiding piece is our strategic plan. Last year, we administered a survey, a survey and had over 6,000 people respond. There were four areas of focus. First was curriculum and instruction. We've implemented readers and writers workshop in our K-5 classrooms through our partnership with Columbia University. This year, we implemented readers, I'm sorry, writers workshop model at the middle school. We're building on our continuum of co-teach up to seventh grade this year with the goal of moving to co-teach to eighth grade in the 2020-2021 school year. And we continue to expand our STEM lessons in our classrooms. Second is our student engagement. We continue to meet with our high school representatives to give their input on how to improve our school. I think a really good example of that is Ethan getting up and speaking at the board meeting. I encourage that tremendously, because I think it gives us an insight as to what they see ways for the school district to improve. And I think the best thing that we've done in the past was the voters approving a student representative on the Board of Education. Next is social-emotional learning. We had Alex Miller present at our superintendent conference day. We piloted Choose Love at Pine Tree, and next year, we'll introduce all of our elementary schools. We've also provided training in DBT, which is dialectical behavior therapy, to our clinicians, school counselors, and social worker. Communication is vital to the partnership with our families, and so we continue to work on our website, Facebook, Instagram, emails, text messages, and lastly, the huge sign in front of Central Valley. We have that there to make sure that we are able to communicate with our stakeholders. And so, based on these things, we developed our budget priorities. First and foremost is the safety of our students. We are recommending in our budget our SROs in all our schools. Additionally, we look to upgrade our locking system at our high school and our other buildings. As far as curriculum is concerned, we are adding an additional Spanish teacher, and that comes directly from increasing the number of students who are going to be taking a foreign language. foreign language. We're also going to have a bilingual school psychologist, a behaviorist. We have one in the district. We're looking to hire a second one to work with not only our students, but our parents and our, and an ENL teacher. The last piece that we'll be focused on is professional development, which is a focus on social emotional wellness. So this is our budget calendar, and as you can see, we began this process in December of 2018. I think one of the issues that we have is that as we look at that, we still don't know what state aid we're going to receive. That is not determined until April 1st, so we begin to develop a budget not knowing how much money we're going to get in state aid. However, in February, we had budget review book one. On the 21st, we had our review from our building principals. On March 6th, we had book two and book three. On March 27th, which was our last board meeting, we had the general personnel considerations, and today, I'm recommending my budget recommendation. On the 25th, the board, the board decides whether to adopt my recommendation. On the 8th, we have a public hearing, and on the 21st, which is late this year, we will have our budget vote at Central Valley. I should speak a little bit about the vote at Central Valley, which is, we've been talking as a cabinet about moving it out of the school because there has been some concern about safety. So in the coming months, you'll hear from us to discuss moving the budget vote from Central Valley. I think it's a, I think it's time for us to do that, and I think it's just keeps our students safer. We have too many people coming in and out of that building, and so again, you're going to hear from us in the coming months. And so the, this slide represents our state aid. The final budget was agreed on March 30th, and there's some interesting things that I want to share with you. Education funding from the governor increased a little under $1 billion, which is 3.6% for regular school aid. This translated into an increase of $1.26 million from Monroe Woodbury or a 2.4% increase for us. Above the state budget, we also received an additional $613,000, and the tax cap became permanent, and the formula remains the same. An increase in salary for the BOSI superintendent for a new cap at 208,000 with an annual maximum increase, increase of 6% per year until they reach their cap. And then, to my surprise, we have been, they have allowed us to have a new TRS reserve, which we feel benefits the district because the district is required to have contributions, and at times, those contributions have been as high as 20%. And the last couple of years, we've been, our contributions have been at 10%. So we are very happy that this actually did pass in the governor's budget. The last item, which was a surprise to many of us, is that we are now required to give our staff three hours of time to be able to go out and vote on Election Day. That is something that we're still looking for guidance from our attorneys. We will be reaching out to them because that does have an impact on us. So usually on Election Day, we have our superintendent conference day, and so it may be difficult to be giving people three hours break and then run a conference day. So we're going to potentially look at changing the way that our calendar looks. And if you look down at the bottom, it's, you know, basically our aid. I think the two big pieces, you will see that there's a decrease in high excess, high cost excess aid and private excess cost. These numbers are projected, projections, and that are based on expenditures, and those are the two. So the bottom line again is we have an increase in aid of 2.42%. The next slide is a copy of the formula that Patrick has very eloquently explained to the board and to the community on multiple times. So I'm so grateful that he does a good job of explaining that formula. But I think the bottom line is that our maximum allowable levy this year is $122,880,452. Our tax cap is 2.57, which is relatively low in comparison to what we've had in past years. That's why we're going to be recommending using our full tax cap. This is just a budget-to-budget review from the previous year. Again, our total budget this year is $181,276,309, and it is an increase in the tax levy of $3,078,000 or a tax levy increase of 2.57. When our voters go to, to, to vote, they will see two propositions. Proposition number one is our total general fund budget, which again is $181,276,309. And that is, on the left side, you see the revenue budget. So we revenue our tax levy, which is $122,878,000. Our total non-property tax revenue and other sources, such as the rental that we have, and other things, other funds that we receive is about $56 million, not about, it is $56,273,309. And then, we are taking from our appropriate reserves $225,000, and from our assigned appropriate fund balance, $1,900,000 to give us the $181,276,309. And so that is proposition number one. Proposition number two is we have always had a bus and vehicle purchase, and this year, we plan on purchasing six big buses and five vans to cost $1,072,235. And finally, if the voters fail to approve on two separate votes, we would have to go to what's called a contingency budget, which means that we would have to use last year's tax levy, and we would have to cut the budget by $3,080,000. This would have a potential of a reduction in staff and therefore would impact our programs and our instructions. Any questions?
Any questions, folks? No? Thank you very much.
I'm going to be asking for approval of the items listed on our personnel. One of the things I would like to point out prior to approval is the appointment of a new math teacher at the high school, Mr. James Sierra. He also happens to be, we're recommending appointment as our next head football coach. So he is in attendance here, so I'd like him just to stand up for, for a second. Welcome, welcome, James. And with that, I'd ask approval for the items listed on the.
Motion.
Matt, I have a question on one of the items in your personnel on 1310. Maybe Dr. Hasser could speak to it. I want to just, what is the Kids Changing the World?
Can I jump on that?
Yes, yes.
This is great. I never get personal questions.
And he's answering.
Kids Changing the World is a club that we've had for quite a few years up at the high school, but for the last, I'm not exactly sure how many years it hasn't actually existed. The, the advisor, that we didn't have an advisor for the club. This year, we had a number of students express an interest, and we also had an advisor come forward. So in order to be able to actually run the club, we have to post, we have to give people an opportunity to apply. Mr. Agro put in a letter of interest to be able to do that. Mr. Agro actually was the advisor of Kids Changing the World when it existed in the high school a number of years ago. Basically, the main mission of the club is to raise funds for various local groups that support different needs around the community. For example, there was an article in the paper, a number, in the record a number of years ago about some fundraising activities that the kids did at the high school to purchase bikes for a local community organization to give to, to give to kids. Basically, just for the board's information, the way that this works is that if we, if we previously had the club, we have the ability to be able to post for the club and, and, you know, appoint somebody to that position so long as there's enough student interest that warrants running the club. We actually had the Student Engagement Committee meeting last month, and the kids expressed an interest in bringing back the, the hip hop, the hip hop dance club. I was in the high school the beginning of the week, and a student from one of the, one of the, one of the student members from the committee said that he thinks that he found a, a person who's gonna, who was going to be the advisor of the hip hop dance club, and they, they want to bring that back, so.
So Eric's appointment as the hip hop club advisor.
Motion. All in favor.
I, I don't possess the necessary qualifications for that. You don't want to see that.
Oh, my goodness.
I bet, I bet you do.
We do.
Yeah. So be, be on the lookout. Probably in the, in the next few meetings, we, we may be appointing somebody to, to be the advisor of the hip hop dance club as well.
Any other questions for personnel? Did, did we have a motion? Moved by Chris. Seconded by Don. All those in favor? Opposed? So carried. A motion to approve the revised 2018-19 student calendar, which adds Friday, May 28th to Memorial Day weekend as a holiday. What?
Do you not see the faces? They're like, just one? Yes, just one day. Two.
Motion.
May 24th. Everybody write it down, May 24th.
Do we, well, it might not pass. Motion. We have, we have a motion? Is there a second? Chris and Suzanne. Any lengthy discussion? There being none. All those in favor? Opposed? So carried. Business and, business and financial, Patrick.
I would ask for the approval of the items under the Business and Financial section of the agenda, which include our standard monthly financial reports for February. There are two donations from, one from Legoland for the Monroe Woodbury Music Program, $500, and a $40 donation from Your Cause to North Main Elementary School. There is one contract for the youth activity camp. We allow them to use our buses in the summer. It's an agreement with the Monroe Joint Parks and Recreation Commission. I think they were going to use, I believe it's about six buses over the summer, and they pay all the expenses associated with the, the use, including salaries of the drivers. There's a resolution to participate in the BOSI's Purchasing Cooperative and Transportation Cooperative. There is a declaration of obsolete items from Pine Tree, basically library equipment. There are the change orders we, we discussed a little earlier related to the Smart Swolds Bond Act. There is a budget transfer for board approval per our new policy. It exceeds a $35,000 threshold, has to do with tuition up in budget, removing monies from the BOSI's tuition line to an ordinary tuition line. There's a resolution to reject the bid for the roof, high school roof, related to our HVAC and turf project, and the bid awards that I discussed earlier, contract 3A to Pearl River Plumbing and Heating, and 3B to Fanshaw, which goes by Rockland Electric.
We have a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All, any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? So carried. Do we have a motion to approve the arrangement on the recommended placements by the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education, 16.1, 2.3, 4.5 in the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do you have that?
Yes.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? So carried. Reports by board and central office. Chris.
I want to thank Mr. Berger and Smith-Clove Elementary. Thank you. I love seeing all those little faces up there. They make me smile. I like to see all the parents. I forget how, it seemed like it was a long time ago when I was standing up there taking pictures, and it was an exciting moment for my five-year-old to be seen. So thank you. I want to congratulate the PTA awards. I want to report that we went on a policy day, I'll say. Conference day. It was about policy and dealing with new climate. Dr. Hassel would have enjoyed the whole thing. It was about climate and dealing with policy and trying to maybe alter another way that we view, the way we deal with students that have dyslexic problems and that don't have dyslexic problems, which was what he was talking about. So, you know, we're looking into changing some things there. I want to thank, I want to congratulate the football coach, bringing him in. I want to thank some of the members from, from Pop Warner who came to support you. I'm one of them. President Bill Scully over there. That's it. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Don.
Okay, so I, I won't be that long.
Teleprompter.
I wanted to give a congratulations to the cast and crew of Addams Family. That was an amazing performance that I saw at the high school a few weeks ago. Would you want to give a special shout out to the, the pit and under Rick Reagan? That was absolutely phenomenal. Just I mentioned, when they were presenting on the world language, I, I just realized that yesterday, I was at the induction ceremony, and there was many students that were inducted into Spanish, French, and Italian, but there was one special recognition for a student that was actually inducted into two of them. So I, I thought that was really amazing on their part. As part of the MW Cares Initiative, the high school had Ian Hockley come in. Ian represents Dylan's Wings of Change, and he came in to talk about inclusion and acceptance and hope, and it was, you know, tied into the Light It Up Blue and World Autism Month. And that's it. Have a good night. Thanks.
Don.
I'd like to congratulate James Sescara, our, our new math teacher and football coach. That's great. All of the kids and the, the pizza song, that was, that's always the highlight of these things, whenever we get to see the little ones. I would also like to thank Elsie and Patrick and the rest of the staff for the amount of time it took to put together such a difficult budget. I know this year was, was, was really hard, and I know it took a massive amount of work. And I'd also like to thank the, the presenters that presented tonight. I think the, the public, when they presented, it always helps the board to see the passion from the, from the public, to see what they're, what they're really thinking, and helps us make better decisions.
Suzanne.
First, I'd like to thank Mr. Cassidy, Mr. Williams, and Mr. Jordan for their presentation on world languages. And I'd like to thank Mrs. Rodriguez for her budget presentation, and Patrick as well, Almond, and all the staff that work so hard because it's a very difficult project. I also attended the school climate workshop in Albany, and it was very informative, and I think it gave us a lot to think about. I'd like to welcome Mr. Sescara to the math department and football coach, and I'd like to give a special thank you to Smith-Clove for hosting our meeting and for sharing your amazing students with us. Thank you, Mr. Berger. And Ms. Reagan.
Donna.
I just wanted to echo everyone in thanking Chris and Nikki Reagan for hosting tonight, and especially to custodian Paul Parlopiano, who did an amazing job setting up everything. And I just want to remind residents, if you're not registered to vote with the county, register with me. There are online forms for personal registration with the district to vote on May 20, 21st. And have a nice spring break, everyone.
Bartov.
Thank you, Mr. Bartov. Ms. Reagan for hosting us. Congratulations to the PTA Reflections winner. I attended a Unified Basketball game at the high school. It was really an amazing event, and especially when you see the, the other teams cheering the, the football, the basketball team. So that was really amazing to see. Attended the world language ceremony and a, a presentation from Ian Hockley as well.
Eric.
Thanks to everybody for presentations. Thanks to Smith-Clove. Congratulations to everybody. I attended a bunch of the, a bunch of the events already mentioned. Just a, a quick, specific thanks to a lot of the staff at the school district. We had state testing last week, and there were, we had computer-based testing for grades, only grades three and four. The state experienced quite a bit of complications related to the administration of those exams, which required our staff, our administration, and everybody within the school district to make, you know, make adjustments on the fly and, and come up with alternate plans. And, you know, the issues were not at all related to us internally. It was just our adjustments based upon their issues, and everyone was absolutely outstanding in terms of doing the best that we possibly could to navigate through a, a very challenging situation based upon what transpired. And I think that, you know, the, the staff, the staff did a really great job. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you. Patrick.
Reiterate everything that's been said. Thank you, Mr. Berger, Ms. Reagan, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Matt.
Same thing. Chris, Mickey, thank you for your hospitality. Two, two brief things. The National Junior Honor Society Ceremony last night was, was awesome. It was long because there were a lot of inductees. I think there was 130-something kids on stage. There was a lot of kids, but a lot of well-deserving kids. And congratulations to Lisa Landau of.
I'd like to thank all the concerned citizens that got up and spoke. Please know that your comments do not fall on deaf ears. I got the best seat in the house here next to those adorable singers. All I wanted to do was just grab them and bite their faces. They were so cute.
She didn't really mean that.
I'm sorry. She didn't mean that.
It's a figure of speech, people.
She doesn't mean that.
She doesn't mean it. Frank?
Squeeze him.
Frank is ready to leave.
I wish my kids were little again. Congratulations to the PTA Reflection winners, and good luck to those that are advancing. Congratulations to James Sierra, if I got that right. Thanks to Karen and John and Wayne for presenting about the post-secondary language. I also attended the policy workshop, and I really have to say it was so thought-provoking. It was definitely down my alley. I really enjoyed it. What? It was, it was. We really need to take, you know, switch gears here on a whole lot of stuff, and they brought a lot of, you know, light to it. And, you know, one of the things is, that was spoken about is, like you said, how we treat the students and how we react to how they are reacting to something. And rather than, you know, being so authoritative and approaching them, and maybe if they're disruptive, having them leave, no, you work this out. You talk about it, and, you know, just take a whole different approach, and I'm all about With that, I'd like to make a suggestion, since we did have a young speaker who advocated for himself and other students, since we should take, switch, you know, switch gears here, maybe reach out to those students who may be affected by the fact that the graduation decision to have it inside may bother them, maybe speak to them, maybe speak to them about not, you know, about those acceptance letters. That's kind of a start. We can start there. And of course, I was not disappointed and exceeded my expectations, the Adams Family. So I think that's it. Thank you. Have a good night.
Stacy?
I want to thank all the presenters. Thank you to Mr. Berger and Mrs. Reagan for hosting us this evening. I know there's a lot of work when we leave the ed center and kind of come off-site, even though it was a short distance, but it's very much appreciated because it's great to see the building. I got to see the library tonight for the first time, and it's adorable, and the kids were lovely, so I know that's always the highlight. We all say that, that's the best part. With that being said, I want to thank Dawn and Mr. Casti and the MW Cares team for bringing in Ian Hockley. Aside from him being a fabulous presenter, it was just great to be there. We were able to go with Mr. Hockley into a couple of the classrooms and get the kids' perception of what he presented on and what he spoke about. And again, to me, that's the best part, is to see what they have to say about it, so I appreciate you guys bringing in the speaker. I want to welcome Mr. Sierra to the math department and the football team. Unfortunately, you're coming on a little bit too late because I have a senior who's graduating but went through the program, so I welcome you. And I want to just address one thing that Lorraine just said. I do appreciate the speakers that got up tonight. I, again, have a senior, so it is definitely a hot-button topic. And I do want to say that there was actually a fabulous video that was made. I was able to see it last week, and I've asked for it to be posted to the district website and Facebook because Mrs. Rodriguez and Mr. Casti did actually meet with several of the students, and they discussed and asked those questions, and it was made public on M-Dub. Am I saying that correctly?
Yes.
The morning show. So I do know that it was broadcast there, but I have asked for it to be kind of put out there so that the parents could actually be able to see that as well. So hopefully, we can get that accomplished. Have a good night.
Anthony.
Congratulations to all the award winners, and thanks to the presenters. Welcome Coach Sierra to the Monroe Woodbury family. The Adams Family was a wonderful production, and certainly, I congratulate all the cast and crew, and thanks, Mr. Berger and Mrs. Reagan for hosting. As I've often said, when I retire, I think I want to try to get a job here because this is the happiest place in the world. Have a good night.
Dan.
High School Musical, awesome as always. The talent at the school is unbelievable. The kids tonight singing makes me think back when my kids were small and happy and not disgruntled teenagers, but I digress. Finally, I went to Rhythm and Rhyme at the high school. I finally get to say something nobody else said. First time I was there, unbelievable. The performers there, original poems, you know, singers. It was, it was unbelievable. So I know it's come and gone, but I suggest that anybody who can go next year, make it a point to be there. It was fantastic. And good night.
Elsie.
I want to congratulate James, and welcome to Monroe Woodbury. And we are excited to have you as a math teacher first and as a coach second. I know some people aren't going to like that, but congratulations, and we are excited to have you. I also want to thank Wayne, Karen, and John because I reached out to you with some questions, and you very quickly put together a presentation, and I'm very appreciative of that. I want to congratulate our reflective winners. I want to thank Mr. Berger and Ms. Reagan for putting this together and having these beautiful little children around us. It does remind us of why we do what we do, which is about the students. And lastly, I attended the Unified Sports Game, the basketball game. And if you have not had a chance to attend that, it is probably by far the best thing that I did this week. It was inspirational. It talked about the culture of this district and how we support all of our children and how we come out for all of our kids. And so, if you didn't, weren't able to come this year, there's, I think there's still another game. Where's Laurie?
Yes, tomorrow.
There's a game tomorrow? Nope. And we're just, we're just getting started, so we have more games, so look out for that. And then finally, I want to just say something to Ethan. I'm really sorry about what you went through because it's, it stinks, for lack of a better word. But know that what you said meant a lot to us. I always get emotional, but the fact that kids didn't get in and we didn't know that is not acceptable, so we're going to change that. So thank you.
There is a game tomorrow.
There's a game tomorrow, too. Are you telling them that? Yes, a unified basketball game. Okay, good.
Always good to do the music booster interviews and see the wealth of talent and intelligence in the district. Adams Family, of course, going to be transferring to Broadway. That's always amazing, too. James, congratulations, and my condolences on a longer commute. Anything else? That's it? That's it? I have a, I need a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss updates on Monroe Woodbury Teachers Association contract negotiations, discuss the employment status of a particular employee, and another thing regarding the, a matter of a particular student. Do I have a motion? And I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried, motion, meeting, is adjourned.